Good evening. Welcome to the October 24, 2023 City Council Meeting. The meeting is hereby called to order. Members of the public may attend the City Council Meeting in person or may watch and listen remotely by viewing the meeting on Channel 8 WCTV and at the city's website at www.yzeta.org/wctv. Public comment during the public forum and/or public hearing portions of the meeting may be provided in person at the meeting, in advance, or by logging into the Zoom call and raising your hand during the public hearing. When your name is called in the meeting, you will be seen and heard in our council chambers and the cable channel. You will be asked to unmute, and then you may begin your comment. All public comments must include your full name and address. Second item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask everyone to please rise and follow along.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is the roll call. Please note that all members of the council, except for Councilmember Plakish, pardon me, are in attendance this evening. I would also like to note that the council participated in a workshop prior to the meeting and reviewed and discussed the 2023 Wine and Spirits Work Plan and the work plan for 2024. And we also reviewed and discussed the updates to the 2024 to 2033 Capital Improvement Plan. Next item on this evening's agenda is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as is, or would anyone care to make any changes?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
To approve the agenda as is?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. All right. The next item this evening is the public forum. Just as a reminder for those members of the public in attendance this evening who are interested in speaking, we ask that you please state your name and address, indicate if you are representing a group, and we also ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. If the item you wish to speak about is something that is on the agenda, for those that are in person, please fill out a form at the table at the back of the room and hand it to staff. For those that are watching via Zoom, please send a note via chat to staff and let them know what agenda item you wish to speak about. We also require that your camera is turned on when you speak. We have a few items on this evening's public forum agenda, and the first up is an update from Three Rivers Park District Activities by March Beard Commissioner, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, Commissioner Beard is here. She is our representative in District One for the Three Rivers Park District. She's here just to kind of give an update of what's gone on with Three Rivers and what we have to look forward to in the future.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm very glad to be here tonight. So my goal for this short presentation is that hopefully you learned something new about Three Rivers. I know we all know it's been around a long time. I hope that you learned something new. So at Three Rivers, our mission is to promote environmental stewardship through recreation and education in a natural resources-based system. That's one of the things that makes us different than some of the other park systems around. We're very focused on natural resources. So who is this Three Rivers we hear about all the time? So Three Rivers was established by the state legislature in 1957. So we're a standalone local unit of government. We really, we don't report to the county. We really stand alone. We are run by a Board of Commissioners. There are seven commissioners. Five are elected. I serve in one of the elected roles. I represent all of western Hennepin County, including the city of Wayzata. And we have two appointed commissioners from, that are appointed by the Hennepin County Board. Our district is suburban Hennepin County, which really means what it sounds like. It's all of Hennepin County with the exception of Minneapolis, because Minneapolis has their own park board. We have a longstanding partnership with Scott County. So if you go down in Scott County, you'll see the Three Rivers signage on a lot of the parks down there. It's a really good example of governments working together to take costs and spread them out and have good economies of, economies of scale there. And we do partner with some other agencies where they have facilities, for example, Glen Lake Golf in Minnetaka that is owned by Hennepin County, and we run it on their behalf. So Three Rivers, we have 25 parks and park reserves, 27,000 acres of land, which translates to about 42 square miles. So it's a very large park district. We have 175 miles of regional trails, and regional trails are those trails like the Dakota Rail Trail. And you'll, they mostly connect parks to parks or location to location. You'll be able to identify them because they have the yellow dashed line down them. That usually tells you it's one of our regional trails. We also have another about 300 miles of trail within our parks, and a lot of those might be paved. Some of them might be dirt trails. I'm a hiker. I like the dirt trails. They're usually a little harder to find than the paved walking or bike trails. And notably, we get close to 15 million visitors a year. And that's really significant because it's over twice our state's population. So right here in our little suburban Hennepin County, we get that many visitors. So at Three Rivers, we really focus on welcoming everybody into our parks and trails, and that's really our focus. We do a lot of outreach to groups that are underrepresented in our parks, and one of our programs we do that's most successful at that is called our Try It Program. So we offer introductory level, no-cost programs, usually one-time programs, that allow people to come out and try something new. Our most popular is the Try It Ice Fishing, because even people who are parkgoers say, I want to know what those people are doing out on that lake. Like, what is that? They're fascinated by it, and they don't know if the ice is safe to go out and just, you know, take a look. So about once a year, we partner one of our various lakes that has a, one of our parks with a lake. We partner with the DNR, and the DNR brings a whole bunch of fishing gear and all kinds of stuff, and it turns out to be a blast. And people say, I would have never gone on the ice. I would have never tried this activity. So it's a good example of trying to get new people to do new activities. One of our key goals in our mission statement was recreation, and you may know us in the summer for canoeing, beaching. We have multiple golf courses, one 18-hole golf courses and a whole bunch of executive golf courses. We also have a mountain bike trail down in Carver Park, which is the Monarch Mountain Bike Trail. And if you're into mountain biking, people tell me it is the greatest trail ever. And mountain biking is one of the fastest-growing high school sports, so there's really a demand for that type of recreation. And when the snow flies, the fun keeps happening. So we're just transitioning into our winter recreation now. You may know us for cross-country skiing, as well as, some people don't know, we actually have downhill or alpine skiing at Highland Hills in Bloomington, as well as a really small hill, but some snowboarding in Elm Creek in Maple Grove area. But we have, you know, a lot of snow shoeing as well as a snow tubing. Snow tubing is wildly popular. Oh, there we go. So at Three Rivers, environmental education is really core to what we do. We have seven facilities that are focused specifically on outdoor education, and we support at those facilities numerous school groups as well as summer camps, things like that. But we couldn't do what we do without the natural resources. That's really the key in what makes us different. One natural resource feature is up in the upper-left corner there. That's Crowhassen Park Reserve, which is in Rogers, and that is the largest restored prairie in the metro area. So if you were thinking about getting in your car and going out to a faraway state park, which you can, but you could also just go right to Rogers and get a glimpse of that up there as well. We, we are always excited to partner with all our cities, and we've been very glad to work with Wayzata over the past couple of years on your Panaway project, and we'll work with you on trails in the future. So it's, we're always looking for ways to partner with our cities, including projects as well as advice. So I would encourage you, if you have natural resource questions, water quality questions, anything related to that, we see what goes on in the county. So we may not have the resource that can do the project for you, but we'd certainly be able to tell you what's going on in the county. So we'd like you to make sure you use us as a resource and a partner going forward. And I did bring with me a few little interesting things about people from Wayzata who come to our parks. So the most popular activity Wayzata people do, there's really no surprise with this, would be the Dakota Rail Trail. And by the way, the Dakota Rail Trail itself, the 13 miles of it, gets about 500,000 visitors a year. It is our most popular trail. And so Wayzata people go to Dakota Rail Trail and Loose Line Trail. So trails are very big. Your big activities are hiking, biking, and running. And then the season pass that has purchased the most is the cross-country all-park ski pass. So you do have a significant number of people who cross-country ski. And for public programs and lessons, the most popular one is the children's ski and snowboard lift tickets. So it seems that the adults are cross-country skiing and the kids are snowboarding. That seems to be what's going on. We also had 13 school groups come to our facilities for environmental education, which is a good size. So you can tell that the schools are making sure that the kids stay up to date in all those kind of natural resource items. And that concludes what I have to say, so I'll just say thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Beard? Yes?
Save everybody the interpretation. What is the, are we trying to connect Dakota and the loose line better?
Yes.
What are the plans for that?
So I'm glad you asked. I have to go to my cheat sheet for that. So that is the Dakota Rail Loose Line Connector. It was part of the Diamond Lake Trail. So we, we had worked significantly with the city on the Diamond Lake Trail, which is the north-south trail from Dayton all the way, I guess, to Medina at the end. And we are working on a grant applica, here, a grant application for federal funding. So if, if that gets passed, we would get the funding in 2028. So that is not a soon thing, but we have to work on, we don't have the funds for things like that. We have to work on acquiring resources for that. So master planning is always the first thing that allows us to go the next step. And now we're on the next step of trying to get the resources to build that connector.
Thank you.
Yeah, great question. And if memory serves me correctly, that would go from the Dakota Rail up Berry Avenue, head west on Wayzata Boulevard, and then north on Ferndale to connect to the loose line.
Yes. That would be an important, that would be an important connector.
Absolutely.
I'm looking forward to the day we get the money to do it.
Well, I just want to thank you, Commissioner Beard, and the rest of Three Rivers. You have worked with us hand-in-hand for many years when we were still planning and organizing and thinking about the Panaway Project. And you certainly provided a, or your team members provided a lot of insights and counsel along the way. Certainly, your partnership with the, the trail down along Lake Street is very heavily used and is a welcome addition as well. So we're very pleased about that. You know, it's interesting, some of the things that you're sharing here, having lived outside of Minnesota and being very blessed to be surrounded by, I grew up outside of Washington DC, but Playground was Washington DC. And I just assumed that every state operated in a similar vein with all of these amazing amenities for everyone to come and enjoy. And I really came to appreciate when I came to Minnesota, especially the metro area, the expansive park system and the programming. So I was just making notes as you were going through some of these things, the tubing. I remember taking my kids tubing. I had never heard of tubing before.
It's fun.
Oh, thank you.
Very popular.
It's so much fun. So, so, so much fun. Certainly, a lot of ski and snowboarding lift passes down in Bloomington. The education too. The education come out, and you also run Galewood's Farm, do you not?
We do.
Which is an amazing facility, and it just speaks to, to everything that I, I love to learn about. And the summer camp programs for children.
Wildly popular. Our most popular.
Is it really?
It, summer camps are by far the most popular. They're also in the most demand to sign up for.
Yes.
Unfortunately, you have to be really quick when they.
When they open.
Open up. Number two most popular is our Snow Academy, which actually just opened two weeks ago.
Okay.
That went, that went well.
Yes.
It is quite a demand on the systems. We always have our fingers crossed that the IT will hold.
Absolutely. Well, that and also I remember staying at some of the cabins that you offer in some of the parks here in the western suburbs and little log cabins. So that was always, felt like you were going off into the big woods, but you were still close to home, and that was really nice.
We have four camper cabins at Baker Campground. In case people don't know, we have a 200-spot campground right in Medina, so that's wildly popular. And then we have our partnership with Scott County. Scott County liked those so much. They're building four down in one of their parks down there too. When we were down there touring this summer, they were half-built, so I'm sure they'll be open for next year. They're just, they're booked all the time, so people really like them. So it's a great way for families, affordably, if you don't want to do the tent thing, to, you know, get a roof over your head and, and camp.
Absolutely. No, it's wonderful. Great amenities, and, you know, I might have to try that ice fishing thing.
I'll let you know when we have, I don't know when it is this year, but we usually have, and it's, it's always like the coldest day, and people come out anyway.
Inevitably, inevitably. But that's part of the whole mystique of it all. So, well, thank you again for all that you do, your mission, you know, for your years of service as well, and for your continued partnership with the city of Wayzata. And it goes both ways. I know you've always made yourself available, and likewise, we do for Three Rivers as well, just given the great work that you do. Thank you very much.
Very much. Have a good night.
All right. We're still in the public forum, and next up, we have an update of Lake Minnetaka Historical Society by its president, Aaron Person, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'll, I'll invite Mr. Person to come up and give us a little update. The last time you, you saw Mr. Person, he was talking about the up-and-coming kind of consolidation or merging of several of the historical societies around the lake, and that has since happened. So I think he's just going to give an update of how that went and what we have to look forward to.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Madam Mayor and, and council members. Yeah, I just want to point out, I am currently the Vice President of Lake Minnetaka Historical Society. I was the President of Wayzata Historical Society. But as the City Manager just said, the Wayzata Historical Society, along with three other local historical societies, dissolved back in May. That was following a vote of every membership of each of the organizations. And we dissolved and consolidated into one new organization called the Lake Minnetaka Historical Society. The new organization is a 501(c)(3) organization, and its mission is to discover, collect, preserve, and share Lake Minnetaka's history, which is very similar to what the Wayzata Historical Society's mission was, except now it's just a larger area. The new organization is headquartered in Wayzata. And I've been saying Wayzata has a lot to gain from this project, and indeed it does. The, the Depot Museum is still operated by the, the Historical Society under the, the new organization. And we still have the, the same familiar faces down there, but also gaining a whole bunch of new faces also. Also, another big addition that Wayzata is getting is that our, our, what used to be the Wayzata Historical Society Archive Space in the lower level of the library across the parking lot is going to be the location of the consolidated archives. So Wayzata will be the spot to go to for, for local history research and, and all of that. Those are the only two municipally-owned buildings that we, we operate under here in Wayzata. However, there are now two and a half other museums around the lake. There is also the Excelsior Historical Museum in Excelsior and the West Taca Upper Lake Museum in, that is currently located in Mound. Also, the new organization has the steamboat, the streetcar steamboat Mini Ha Ha under its possession also. So the boat is currently in, in storage in Excelsior, but we hope to one day get her back in service and serving the community of Wayzata like she once did.
Well, thank you for the correction on your title, although maybe we should just give you a promotion. So, well, thank you, Mr. Person. Any questions? So how long has it been now since the consolidation?
Yeah, so the, the vote was in May, and it passed overwhelmingly. And then it was effective October 1st, so it's just been a few weeks.
Well, congratulations. I know that's not, that is not a small undertaking. We really appreciate it. We appreciate the continued focus, certainly. I know that, you know, that's a big departure from how we operated previously, but we feel that we're in really great hands, and the legacy will continue to live on, and certainly all of the great work that you all do to maintain that history for generations to come. Thank you. Wonderful.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening. All right. And lastly, in our public forum, we have an introduction of a new employee. Or not.
We do.
Oh, we do. Okay, good. You were looking, I was, you were looking skeptical there. Nick Nystrom, our Assistant Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I tricked you, because I'm definitely not skeptical about Nick Nystrom, our new Assistant Director of Public Works. Director Kelly's going to talk a little bit more, but just briefly, we, we're a small town. We're a growing organization. We're larger than most people, most people think, but kind of a unique attribute of our organizations that we introduce all of our full-time employees, just so people have a name to a face, and when you see them around town, you know who they are. So I think it's kind of a cool thing that we do. So thank you for, for acknowledging that and, and hopefully roasting Nick a little bit here. But Nick started a couple of months ago, and he's really kind of, if you think of our, our past public work superintendents, like Jim Ebensteiner, more recently Bernie, Nick's taking that role, but with more leadership and more redundancy to support our director. So that's what's really exciting about this new role. But with that, I'll be quiet and let Director Kelly introduce him even more so.
Thanks, Jeff. You only took about half of the things that I was going to say. But I, I appreciate the intro, and I'm sure Nick does as well. So, City Council, city of Wayzata, we're happy to introduce Nick Nystrom as our Assistant Director of Public Works. As Jeff mentioned, he's coming into a new role that was previously filled as a superintendent role by Jim Ebensteiner and Bernie Poyer. This one's a little bit different. As Jeff mentioned, not only is it kind of the superintendent duties, but it has more leadership responsibilities as well. Nick started his public works journey back in 2004 as a seasonal worker. So he started at the beginning. He did that seasonal work in Brooklyn Center for about seven seasons. Most recently, he's worked in the utility department at Robinsdale, and he's, he was there for six years. In his free time, it sounds like he's been motivated to learn more and more about public works. He has several certificates that he's earned, including the APWA Public Works Certificate, which is through the U of M, and the Public Works Leadership Academy Certificate, which is through Hamlin University. So with that, he's a pretty motivated guy. We're excited to have him on the team, and that's my intro. I know you're going to ask him some questions, so I will turn it to Nick to give him, give his own little introduction, and then you guys can grill.
All right. Perfect. Good evening.
Hi, Madam Mayor, Council. I just want to say I'm excited to be a part of the Wayzata community and the Public Works Department, and I'm, I'm extremely excited to join the team there. So I'm looking forward to doing great things for this community and, and being a part of it. Kind of one of my values is being a part of a smaller community, coming from the Robinsdale community, smaller, 15,000, this is a little bit smaller. However, we had 14 guys working at Public Works. We have 15 guys, workers, I should say, at Wayzata. So it's, it's a similar crew, so that's something I'm kind of used to, and that's extremely valuable to me, so.
Fantastic. Well, welcome. We're very pleased to have you. Any questions for Nick?
No, just a welcome. I'm, I'm big glad to see you out on the street, and I'm sure Mike is going to keep you quite busy.
Absolutely.
Welcome.
Well, Jeff?
What's your first thing you're going to fix?
That's assuming something's broken.
The biggest deferred maintenance that you see.
Well, there's a CIP though. Well, there's a CIP that we have that I have to go along with, but, but no, I, you know, important things to me, I mean, I will say that at Robinsdale, we were treated extremely well with the equipment that we had, and just with the opportunities for education and stuff like that. So I would like to provide those type of opportunities for our employees as well, the best that I can, because I think it's extremely important to help guys, if they wanna advance their careers and do different classes and do different stuff like that. Like I said, I find that extremely important, and luckily, I was able to do a lot of that stuff. So I want to help other people do that kind of stuff as well. So, yeah. So not so much on the exact role that I'm gonna fix first, but, oh, yeah, we'll, we'll look into it. Good luck. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we didn't tell him that he had to respond CIP, that he just said that, so I'm impressed.
He's paying attention to the evening's agenda. I like that. That's very good. He gets a gold star. Biggest challenge in the next 90 days?
Just kind of getting to know everybody, kind of figuring out what the expectations are for my position, and, yeah, just figuring out. I was a worker four weeks ago, so now being in a leadership role, it's just kind of, I don't want to say the role's reversed, but it's just different for me. So just kind of figuring out kind of where I'm going and what I'm doing, so.
Absolutely. And it comes with challenges. As a new position, I think we're all gonna figure that out a little bit as we go, and, you know, so we, we all give each other grace in that process. There, we might have a few stumbling blocks along the way, but, you know, your role is very important, and public works overall, and the work that the team does is incredibly important. We consider our team of public works to be first responders. They're right up there in an emergency, along with our police and fire. We manage streets, water, sewer, the lift stations, the park maintenance, the snow plowing. I know I'm forgetting a lot.
You're forgetting a lot, but you've done a wonderful job of explaining the big ones.
The big ones, yes. I know there's a lot more, but it is important, and those are the things that keep our city running effectively and efficiently and safely for all of our residents and our businesses. And so we are incredibly, incredibly grateful for the work that all of you do every single day. And so it will be, it will be a learning curve, but I think what you'll find is certainly a supportive environment, and one that wants to encourage your ongoing development and support as you take on these new challenges. So thank you very much for considering us. Thank you for joining us. We wish you many, many years of professional success here at Wayzata, and look forward to many updates in these chambers for years to come from both of you. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. So, city manager, do we have any Zoom participants who would like to comment during the public forum?
Madam Mayor, we do not.
Any slips received?
Madam Mayor, no.
Okay. Very good. Then we will move on to the next agenda item, and that is item number six. Council, do any of you have items you would like to bring up for a future meeting?
No.
All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda. On this evening's consent agenda are the following items: Approval of the City Council Workshop Minutes of October 10, 2023; Approval of the Check Register; Approval of Municipal Licenses; Receipt of our Police Activity Report; Receipt of our Building Activity Report; Receipt of the Bar and Grill Assessment by Delaney Consulting; Adoption of Resolution 59-2023, Accepting a Donation of Public Safety Equipment from the Wayzata Mason Lodge, Number 205; Approval of Amended Lease Agreement with Lake Minnetaka Historical Society; Approval of Letter of Agreement with Kent Good Road Piano for the Volunteer Appreciation Dinner; Adoption of Resolution 60-2023, Approving the Revised 2024 Wayzata City Council Meeting Schedule; And lastly, Approval of Use of Wayzata Beach as a staging area for the Lake Walk construction. Any members of the council have any questions or wish to pull an item for further discussion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, Kathy, please go ahead.
It's on item K. Doesn't need to be pulled, but just some clarification.
Very good. Please go ahead.
So we are looking at staging some equipment for the Lake Walk construction on the Wayzata Beach. I just want to make sure, I'm not sure how long it'll be there, but in the event that it's there for a little bit, that we leave a driveway for people to get access to the lake to ice fish.
Madam Mayor and Council, I can respond to that. The, the goal of using the beach is to streamline and speed up the construction of the Lake Walk, which is intended, at least from the barge standpoint, to be completed in early December before ice out. We're hoping we can get that equipment out of there in early December, and then we'll allow it wide-open access for public access to the lake.
Perfect, because it's really used all winter, so I just want to make sure that that stayed open. So thank you for the clarification.
Great, thank you. I do know also that there, there's been a lot of coordination and planning with the local businesses, the building owner, in terms of also when those deliveries would happen and the movements of those large trucks, given the tight quarters, getting in and out, dealing with the railroad, chamber parking, et cetera. So there's been a lot of coordination in that regard, and everything we're assured will be put back to the condition which it's found once they're completed with that transport.
Better be.
Yeah.
Not better be, it will be.
I know. Well, thank you. All right. So we've gone through the consent agenda. Any other questions? No? Any other items to be discussed? All right. Would someone care to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been first and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes. All right. Next up is a public hearing, and under the public hearing this evening is for us to consider adoption of Resolution 57-2023, Certifying to the County Auditor Assessments for Unpaid Delinquent Utility Bill Charges. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just gonna pull this up shortly. Thanks. So, tonight in front of you, I'll just give a little bit more background here, and then ultimately, after my presentation is done, we'll have to open the public hearing, see if anybody wishes to speak, and then close it. And ultimately, I'm hoping that the council will take action to adopt the resolution that was in the packet, Resolution 57-2023. The background on this is, I'll go through it pretty quickly and just answer any questions that the council has. But over the course of the year, any delinquent utility bills that are, I believe at least 60, I'm sorry, 30 days past due and are still unpaid, we create a draft assessment roll. We send tho, the, the set, the proposed assessments out to the individual parcels in order to ensure that the parcel owner, owners know the proposed assessment. And then in addition to that, we let them know about this public hearing, so they have the ability to come to a public hearing and protest, or provide us more information about why they haven't been able to pay their bills. We have this process just because this is a service that we need to get paid for, and this is kind of the last chant, our, our last leverage in order to ensure that we get paid. We do it now because we need to ensure that there's enough time to get the role to the county, because ultimately, these assessments are a part of their overall tax bill. And we've talked about this in years past, the assessments, this process, because this process takes time and money from the city, we do charge an admin fee as well as an interest rate in order for folks that are, are, you know, paying the, paying it overtime. It's on their taxes, so we're not getting the, the funds directly. So we charge an interest rate of 6.5%. I will say, and the second, or the, the last point on this sheet articulates it, we haven't updated this over the last year when interest rates gone up. So generally speaking, the interest rate should be reflective of the market, plus 1.5% for admin costs. So clearly, I mean, regardless of the type of borrowing, interest rate is, is at around 6.5%, not inclusive of an admin fee. So we're gonna address that next year. So at this point next year, you'll more than likely see a proposed higher interest rate from staff.
City Manager?
Yeah.
Is that just a, a policy? I mean, that's not something council needs to approve. I think we had set CPI plus a certain number of points, right, above CPI. So would that be handled administratively? You wouldn't be looking for council action each year on setting that amount, would you?
No, because really, the amount needs to, not, not as a part of this process tonight, because the amount needs to be determined prior to the notifications that we send out. So any direction that the, the council has, ultimately, it is done administratively and as a part of this resolution, because it's, it's, it's the exhibit that showing the, the balance, and it's all incorporated in the assessment sheet. So if there was any strong direction, you know, to keep that same approach, I would just make sure that's factored into the start of the process next year.
Yeah, I think, I think a couple cycles ago, we had explored that, and we just had CPI plus whatever those points above CPI necessary to recover administrative costs. So I don't.
Right.
So I think we're good, right? Just on an ongoing annual basis, that that gets reexamined and then incorporated into the notification.
On the front end.
On the front end.
Which we didn't do this time, but we will do next time.
Okay.
Yep.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Just a quick, kind of, I wouldn't call them fun facts, but summary of just the history. We had 14. That sounds like a lot, and there's a lot of money that's being, that is proposed to be assessed. That is relatively low compared to other communities. I got some information today. You can see the rate of delinquency. This is based on all the parcels that we have in town, is 0.7%. We looked at two neighboring communities, and they're over 2%. So that reflects well on the community. There haven't been too many trends of the types of properties. I would say at least half of them usually are properties that are in transition, are, are, you know, contract for deed or in a sale, and it just, these types of assessments or, or services that the city provided prior have just gone, you know, unknown or lost in kind of the shuffle. So it's a pretty low number, and we hope that it'll continue to kind of go on the downward trend there. Any questions about the, the fun facts?
No, I think from the, there are a couple high-dollar amounts, and you and I spoke about this last week.
Yeah.
Director Kelly, do you have any information about, specific information about those two properties? And specifically, I'm talking about Fardell Road West and Lakeview Lane South. And those are substantial dollar amounts. Have we spoken to the property owners? Have we ensured that there wasn't some kind of gaffe on, I mean, things happen. Not that it would change anything here, but those dollar amounts did surprise me.
Madam Mayor, I, I don't have information, detailed information on each of those properties. I'd be happy to look into that. To me, it looks like they're several months' worth of unpaid bills. They're not simply a month or two. I know that Rebecca is very diligent as we work through our utility billing process to point out any discrepancies that happen, and I'm sure she's had contact at least once with them about this. I'm happy to look into seeing kind of what the sum total is. Is it six months? Is it nine months? If you're interested in that.
No, no, it's just such a substantial amount compared to all of the others, and traditionally, I don't think barring a commercial property, even if it was 12 months, I mean, that's a, that's a high water bill every month. So I don't know if people are leaving their faucets on, or what's going on there, but.
And like I said, we, we typically, Rebecca catches those kind of anomalies month-to-month when we do our meter reads and contacts property owners if it looks like a bill has been significantly over the previous month, or we always understand that we have summer months and it's different than winter. But she's very good about contacting them and having our crew go in and check for leaks and those types of things. Like I said, I'd be happy to look into it a little bit further and let you know offline.
Yeah, absolutely. No need to do that. I didn't know if you were aware of anything specific. And speaking of Rebecca, there is no better person to have work at Public Works, especially customer-facing. Just the sound of her voice, when you talk to her, she just takes your anxiety from here down to here, be it about your trash or your water bill or anything else. So I have no doubts that this has been thoroughly vetted by her, and she gives all the confidence in the world. So we're very, we're very fortunate to have her.
Madam Mayor, just, this is just for informational purposes. This is the actual assessment roll. That's a part of the resolution. That's a part of your packet tonight. So with that, we do ask that after the public hearing is open-closed, that the council adopts Resolution 57-2023.
Okay, very good. Before I open the public hearing, so if I understand the process correctly, we certify this to the county auditor. It then gets put on, it's a special assessment to the person's property. So when they get their property tax bill, they're paying their regular property tax, and they're paying this bill as well. So we're not waiting for some major event for us to get our money.
That's exactly right. It's, we'll get it twice next year when we get the property tax reimbursements. They do have a little bit more time before it goes to the county, so some of those may fall off if they pay, but.
Sure.
We're planning on bringing them all to the county.
Okay. Very good. Very good. Well, as was mentioned, this is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Madam Mayor, not for this item.
Okay. Seeing that nobody wants to come up to speak on this matter, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will bring it back to the council. Any questions of staff? All right, very good. Then, you know, this is, this is a service that we provide. Other communities around the country opt to shut people's utilities off. That is not something that we pursue here. So this is a mechanism that is afforded to us and be able to get our money in a relatively shorter amount of time. Not as quickly as a monthly payment, but be that as it may. So with that, would someone care to make a motion to adopt Resolution 57-2023, Certifying to the County Auditor Assessments for Unpaid Delinquent Utility Bill and Other Charges?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Parkill. Is there a second? Motion has been first and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion passes. We will move on to new business, and under new business this evening, item 9A is to consider adoption of Resolution 58-2023, Approving Impervious Surface and Sideyard Setback Variances at 308 Hampton Street South. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Assistant Plana Quarles is going to walk us through this item.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Tonight, we'll be talking through a development application at 308 Hampton Street South for an impervious surface variance and a sideyard setback variance. The owner of this property is Cynthia Warnert, and then the applicant's representative is her architect Perry Bolan. The project is located here on the east side of town, and in terms of zoning context, this is in our R3A single and two-family district, and nestled within our central core residential district. This is definitely in the neighborhood where we have some of our oldest plats and our oldest homes as well. This is a quick aerial view of the property. You can see that- You can see that out in front of the property, there's a retaining wall in the right of way and then a driveway right next to it. That driveway is gravel. The home sits close to the front of the lot and then very close to the north side of the lot, definitely within the setback. And then way in the corner there, you can see a small detached garage that that gravel driveway travels all the way back to. The neighbors are 312 Hampton, which is another historic home, and then 1202 LaSalle to the north. Hampton Street sits over there to the west and then just calling out 1220 LaSalle diagonally there as they are one of the people who submitted a public comment prior to the first planning commission meeting. This is a lot of colors, but it's actually a little bit easier to understand than just putting the survey up. The lot itself is about 6,500 square feet or about .15 acres. The minimum size in R3A is 9,000 for new lots. The home itself was built in 1914 and is pictured in orange there. Almost everything on this lot does not conform to setbacks in some way or another. Typically, we want driveways to be further from the property line. We want accessory structures to be further from the property line. But again, this is a very old property and predates most of those regulations. In green in the middle of the property, I've called out the fact that there's a cellar. Part of the applicant's discussion of this application is that their cellar is the only way that they access their utilities and they can only come in from the outside. So you can imagine that during the winter, that has become a little bit of a problem over the years. And then 312 Hampton is this home to the south. I mentioned that it was historic. It is also very, very close to the property line, but we did process a variance for it because they did some substantial renovations and updates to the house in 2014. So that was seen by the council in the last 10 years for a similar discussion. This is a street view of the home. The first one would be standing in front of the driveway, looking at that retaining wall in the right of way and then at the house. And then that second image does a really good job of showing just how close that driveway comes to that house to the south. It is really, really tight in there. So the development application is to build an attached garage at the back of the home with living space above to remove that existing detached garage in the back of the lot, to reconfigure the driveway to just serve that new garage. I mentioned rearranging retaining walls. That is not the right of way retaining wall. There are a couple right next to the house that you'll see on a future site plan that sort of allow the grade to slope down as you get further towards the back of the lot. Resurface that driveway with concrete pavers. As I mentioned, right now it's just gravel. And then adding a rain garden in the back to handle some of the impervious surface demands that this property has. So the variance for impervious surface is to actually reduce that current non-conforming hardcover from 42.5% down to 38.7%. We've looked at a couple of applications like this one before where it's a reduction, but they're still over our limit, so we process it as a variance. And then a side yard setback on that north side to bring it down from 10 feet to 2.4 feet. So this image is, you can see the original house is pictured in orange and then the proposed addition is right behind it and sort of that lighter yellow color. Just for reference, the footprint of that existing house is about 800 square feet and then the footprint of the proposed addition is about 640, just to have a sense of scale. We're really zoomed in on this property right now. This is not a large house. In front on the Hampton side, that's the beginning of that new driveway. We encourage them to just pave that with asphalt completely in the right of way. We typically don't want to see a lot of gravel driveways just because that can create runoff problems and maintenance issues. And because that's outside their property line, it's not going to affect their hardcover, so why not? From there, you go on a tire track style driveway down to kind of an L-shaped area that takes you directly in to that new garage, which loads from the side. Next to that driveway, you can see under the label that says grass, that's where some of those original retaining walls were. You sort of stepped down as you went towards the back of the lot as it sloped down. Those are just going to be turfed and then there's a little deck on the addition. And then in the back, you can see that that detached garage way back there is out, so we're now able to keep all these improvements much closer to the front of the lot, but also reduce that impervious surface quite a bit. That's where a lot of that loss comes from. And then a rain garden in the back of the lot to deal with any runoff that may be present on the lot, especially as it slopes towards the back. These are just for, two floor plans for reference and then a quick note that, that front of the house really is a lot higher than the back. So what they'll do is they'll go down a slope from the front and then end up at that driveway. So that's how that living space above the garage is able to not be higher really than the existing house. It's because it drops off so much back there. I've mentioned a couple of these things already. There are a couple of minor updates in addition to the driveway changes, adding a concrete walkway, changing those retaining walls. Stormwater management has been a big theme with this application. That proposed rain garden in the back does provide capacity for all that hardcover above 25%. You may be thinking, we talked about 35%. Why are we saying 25%? That's because this is within 1,000 feet of Lake Minnetaka, so it's in the Shoreland Overlay District. And any property in the Shoreland Overlay District that proposes these kinds of improvements has to mitigate their stormwater down a lot further than just that R3A limit of 35%. The side yard setback variance comes about because that addition really follows the existing line of the house. I think that the front of, the front corner of the house closest to Hampton is about four-ish feet from the property line and then sits at a tiny bit of an angle relative to the property line. So if you follow that line and build your addition, you end up with about two and a half feet between the addition and the property line. The adjacent home is compliant with setbacks, so it's not like there's another home that's also very close to this property line. It should be noted that when we first started looking at this application with the owner, the first thought was I'd really just like to move my, my current detached garage up the current driveway. That was putting us in a situation where we were both very close to her existing house and very close to 312 Hampton. So this was part of the design solution to not crowd on the south side, is to push it more towards the north side. I'll also note that there are no utilities in that setback, so we're not over anything in particular. In terms of engineering departments, I mentioned no utilities. They found that that stormwater management plan was adequate. It's always true whenever we have a management plan, but there's always going to be a stormwater facilities maintenance agreement as part of that. If you're going to do these kinds of improvements and we're going to approve a project based on these improvements, you have to maintain them. There will also be a permit for making those driveway improvements in the right of way with that asphalt. And then I mentioned that an as-built survey is required. We require this for every project, but we did have the neighbor at 312 Hampton comment at the planning commission meeting and he wanted to be very specific about saying the tolerances here are really close. We really can't afford to be a foot off or six inches off because his house is right there. So just to note, we do require an as-built survey and if that's not accurate, they, they have to fix it. So neighborhood notification for this one was standard. We don't require a neighborhood meeting for variances alone. We did get two public comments ahead of time written. One was for, one was against. Both are included in your packet. The one that was against primarily talked about stormwater and so that was a big point of discussion at the planning commission meeting. We talked about the rain gardens role in that drainage specifically. Some other discussion points were that we wanted to talk about the practicality of that tire track style driveway in the long term. We ended up sort of boiling this one down to the applicant's choice. If they decide in the long term that it's not practical, they can come back to us and seek a further impervious surface variance if they'd like to. We talked about the relationship of that addition to the other buildings nearby, particularly the house to the north that ends up lining up with pretty well in the back. I mentioned that the 312 Hampton neighbor attended. He was concerned about those tolerances, but he really did comment positively on the project overall. And then overall, the planning commission really stated their desire that they really wanted this applicant to coordinate with neighbors. At that meeting, the applicant was not present. And so there were some questions for the applicant that staff answered adequately, but that the planning commission would have liked to ask to the applicant or the applicant's representative. To that end, they ended up approving at 40. They cited that they wanted, you know, it's good to see these older, smaller homes improved rather than torn down, that it's a positive addition to the neighborhood. Practical difficulties for sure related to that lot size, that existing home location, trying to find space for, you know, a two-car garage, which was not considered an unreasonable ask. And then overall, you know, we're going from no stormwater management and a gravel driveway to a lot of stormwater management and no gravel driveway, so that being seen as a big plus. So the motion in front of you will be to adopt Resolution 58-2023 approving an impervious surface variance and side yard setback variance at 308 Hampton Street South. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quarles. Questions of staff? Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll bother you after. Val, would you be able to pull up the, the slide that shows the neighbor to the north on at the gentleman that? Perfect, thank you so much for the 640 square feet. I am just wondering, in the discussions at all, either with the applicant or at the planning commission, was there any discussion of having some type of a drainage tile on the north side of that addition to help with any kind of potential runoff onto the property?
It's to the right.
Well, I know there's a, there's a pond, right? But is there drainage tile underneath?
It's really small. Roof drains to infiltration basin via drain tile.
Because I can't read what we get in our packet. Sorry, that's maybe just age because it's so tiny.
It's a hard trade-off. We want the packet to load, but.
Okay, so walk, walk me through where that drainage tile is located. Does it run the backside of the house on the north side of the property and then empties into the rain pond?
I would also, I have to, I would have to zoom in myself on my tablet to see exactly where. I don't know if you recall from your review, Mike?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council. The way that that's set up, it's intended to pick up the gutters off of the roof. So the gutters are directed to the corner downspout and from the corner downspout directed underground to the rain garden.
Okay, so nothing on the backside of it in case we have extremely heavy rainfall?
No, there's nothing that lays along the north side of the building.
The reason I ask is just, I've seen history before where conditions sometimes exist that we don't predict. And since they're building it, it would be a minor expense to add potentially, again, that's not my forte, but I am somewhat in the business. Would it be beneficial to help alleviate the concern that the neighbor to the north has if there was additional drain tile on the back to capture overload of rainfall that would not go into the gutter and into the rain garden?
I don't know that it would be a huge benefit. What was falling on the ground in that area before was running off untreated, unmanaged. It's now being captured by the additional roof to a gutter and being directed to the stormwater management area. I, I see this as an improvement. That small area somewhere between two and a half and four feet over the length of the building is quite small.
Because the house actually butts up pretty close to the property line, the other property, doesn't it?
The proposal in front of you is, at the front of the house is four feet and at the rear of the proposed addition is two and a half.
And is the house on the property, the other property, 1022 LaSalle? How many feet away from the property line is that, do you know?
I would have to check to see exactly how many feet away it was, it is. I think I noted that it was at least outside of the setback, so at least 10 feet. And then just as a clarifying point, the comment about drainage actually came from 1220 LaSalle, which is back and diagonal.
Came from, oh.
Yes, so that's why I called it out on, on this slide is because part of the discussion at the planning commission meeting was some confusion between 1202 and 1220 because they're very similar property.
So not only am I blind, but I'm dyslexic as well.
No, but the email is signed 1220 and 1222 LaSalle Street YZ. Not their names, but just those two addresses. I'm not even sure where 1222 is. That's not even on the picture here.
I had a tough time finding 1222 as well. I think that might just be a mailing address that they use occasionally and not necessarily the Hennepin County address, but it's not the same as 1202, the neighbor directly to the north.
Okay.
And if I could just add, the rain garden in the back that will be capturing this water and then holding water and allowing some water to infiltrate should alleviate some of the concerns for the property owner at 1220 LaSalle.
Okay, I'm just trying to be preventative of potentially what could happen because of how close in proximity these houses are and the expense to potentially do it now is nothing compared to if it's built. But if you feel it's over-engineering and not necessary, then I'm going to have to rely on your expertise and hope we don't have this discussion ever again.
Yeah, as Ms. Quarles mentioned, there was no stormwater management on the site before, so having some is a huge improvement.
Yeah, and I think there was some issues before, so that's probably his concern. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. As I get to Councilmember McDonald in just one quick second, but I'd like to build on Councilmember Iverson's question. You were talking about the downspouts, the gutters and downspouts on the addition. What are we doing about the whole house? Are they all being buried and connected? Or are we only focusing? What's the plan there? The lot is so small and we're requesting them.
I don't know if you can pull up the elevations.
We could also check in with the applicant's architect about that one as well.
Yeah, I think the intent is the addition, and I can't, I can't read it from here. The addition gutters point north and south. They tie into the original house, which the peak runs, runs north-south, drains east-west. So the north will continue to drain to the, or the front side will continue to drain to the front side. The backside will get picked up with gutters to the addition, I believe.
You can see on the street view that that front peak, yes, slopes to the side, but then going back from there, you can see that that, the next sort of mass of the house runs side to side so that it's flowing either towards Hampton or towards the backyard as opposed to over into the north side yard.
Was anything discussed with the applicant in terms of, we're dealing with non-conforming structure, non-conforming lot, request for a side yard variance, perking variance, impervious surface variance? Did, did we consider highly suggesting that all of the downspouts be directed into the earth so there is no surface runoff considering the close proximity of all of the neighbors here?
The specific discussion about downspouts on the existing house was not had. I don't imagine that that would be a really difficult thing to add to this project. So I think if the council wanted to, at least, I don't know if it really meets the, the level of a condition, but at least strongly noted in the minutes so that we can integrate that into the final plan, I think that'd be appropriate.
I think it would definitely be a condition that I would support and advocate for. And I'll give you a little bit of history and context to other members of the council. Having lived in the neighborhood just to the north of here, small lots bigger than this, when, when the grading changed, when the amount of roof changed, the surface area and the amount of water that that collected ends up coming down, we have more significant rain events that are occurring. All of that was impacting surrounding properties. And just from my own personal experience and what I had to contend with when that happened in close proximity to my own home, I would be an advocate for taking some of those preventative measures just to ensure. And this is the Shoreland Overlay District as well. So there are additional precautions that we want to be considerate of. The pond is a great option, but again, as we know, only a well-maintained pond. So that would be something that I, I'm open to discussing further in terms of the downspouts with my colleagues. But Councilmember McDonald, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to ask Assistant Director, Deputy Director to clarify the retaining wall changes. I guess I'm not totally clear, but this picture being up might be kind of helpful. I'm guessing maybe it's these wood retaining walls on the side. Reason asking is there is some concern from the neighbor next door that was voiced during the planning commission about drainage not going onto his house essentially. So is there a retaining wall on the south side of the driveway as well? I'd just like you to clarify that. Thanks.
That's a great question. There is a retaining wall on the south side so that, you know, if there is water running down that driveway, it's below the elevation of the house to the south. And then the retaining wall that we were seeing on the street view is, is the one in the, in the right of way and there are no changes proposed to that. But overall, that driveway ends up sort of sitting, not quite in a channel, but it does have a little bit of a wall on the south side.
That's a good thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Parkill, did you have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess expanding on what the mayor was kind of inquiring about the front 820 square feet. Is there, Mike, or Director Public Works Kelly, is there a way to mitigate that with downspouts that go into underground piping that would take it back to the basin, the rain garden? I wasn't sure exactly how that roof was laid out in the back. I could see the front. But it seems like it would be a reasonable request to have them, you know, the two, the two west corners feed into something underground that goes to the back or somewhere else.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Parkhill. We can definitely look at that. Sorry, I've been trying, my computer decided to want to do an update to Adobe right at the time that I was trying to find the plan set. So I could look a little bit closer at how the roof is laid out and how the existing house ties into the addition. I think the comments that have been made so far by the council and mayor, I think we can incorporate the rear of the existing house into the gutter system of the proposed addition. The challenge will be, there won't be a way, just how the roof is laid out, the orientation of the peak, to pick up the front side of the house and send it to the back. I think there can be a comment that we want to ensure that those, if there are any downspouts on the front, are directed to the front to pass the front of the front of the house to the south.
Right.
So I think we can do that.
In some form or fashion, I don't, I didn't mean to imply that it had to tie in to drain to the drain, at the rain pond or the rain garden. Just meant not on the surface and certainly not in a way that would potentially cause any damage to someone else's home.
Absolutely.
Proximity, so if it went out the front diagonally in a spiral down below, I'll leave that to the experts to figure out. But it's the surface water I'm concerned about.
Absolutely.
I'll leave it at that.
Yep.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Yes, Kathy?
Question, is she making any changes to the elevation of the front of the house?
No.
Okay, so the pitch in the retaining wall, none of that is going to be altered?
Nope, all the proposed changes to the house are on the backside.
Okay, and you talked a little bit, Val, about the orientation? Because the first thing I thought when I looked at it was the orientation of the garage in the opposite direction, so more towards the back. And you thought that was more problematic than where it ended up in this design. Could you explain a little bit about that?
For sure, Councilmember. What I was citing was an original discussion I had had with the applicant. The first application they had actually submitted to me was just to take their existing detached garage and move it up more towards Hampton. We ended up moving away from that because it would end up being very, very close to that house at 312 Hampton to the south. It would have been in line and, you know, probably within, you know, five feet of that house or something like that. So that was the discussion I was citing there. And then this garage ends up loading from the side just because, one, the grading facilitates that and two, because it means you don't have to loop all the way around in the backside and add a ton of impervious surface. So this ends up being the most efficient way to use that space.
Okay, and she's somewhere about 12 feet to 14 feet away from the neighbor to the north though?
Somewhere in there. I'm not sure if he's at exactly 10 feet or greater than 10 feet from this.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great. I will bring you back to the council then for discussion. Who would like to begin?
Fine, briefly.
Councilmember Parkhill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you, the planning commission, for, they answered most of my questions as I went through and read all their notes in the meeting minutes. I love that they're wanting to keep this cute little house in the neighborhood. I think it's, adds something to the neighborhood not to have a brand new, larger thing. So I'm thrilled that they want to keep it. I understand the practical difficulty. It is a small lot. And the location of the home, so I would, I feel very good about approving this variance, at least from my perspective, and I will vote yes.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Parkhill. Who would like to go next?
I'll go next, Madam Mayor.
Perfect.
Councilmember Parkhill summed it up very well. I am in full agreement and would like to support this application.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Iverson?
So I also support the application. It is a very tiny lot. However, I would like to see some, a condition put, or some language in regards to the runoff of both the existing house and the requested addition. And that could either be done through a recommendation from staff for gutters or if necessary, drain tile to direct any runoff from the existing and the proposed into the rain garden. Because I still am concerned that there's going to be some unforeseen runoff and being preventive on the front end. And so I'm going to look for staff if that should be a condition or how else potentially we could handle that.
Okay, very good. I think we can, I'm in agreement with the condition. I'd like to narrow it down a little bit more in terms of rather than the either or. But if I could propose a condition whereby staff works with the applicant to reduce any surface runoff from the roof or something to that effect, I think I'll look to the city attorney in terms of how that condition might be stated. I don't want to say absolutely it has to be one system or another, drain tile or the downward direction of the downspouts below grade. Thoughts on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you know, the resolution as it's drafted now does require, there is a condition about the applicant building and completing the project in conformance with the plans depicted in the application, including plans for stormwater management and mitigation, which Director Kelly has reviewed. I think my recommendation to council be to defer to Director Kelly's expertise in this area. He's heard your concerns. But maybe we change that condition just to add the phrase, you know, plans depicted in the application as further reviewed and approved by the city engineer to address your concerns about the stormwater runoff.
Okay.
That would leave Director Kelly with some discretion to figure out what is the best solution for the particular property. That's my thought.
And you understand the, kind of the gravity of our concerns and how you might address those?
I do, and if I could respond, I believe the plan addresses those. The new driveway that is being proposed is directed to a trench drain in front of the garage. The proposed addition ties into the existing house. They're suggesting that there will be gutters with downspouts that are directed to the infiltration basin. I believe they're addressing the concerns that you have. And we can ensure that as they build the project that they install those and implement those.
Yeah, and I mean, given, not to beat a dead horse here, but given there were already water issues with the smaller footprint of a house, my concern is by increasing the surface area of that roof, if we're only addressing what we're catching on the back end, but we're still creating that runoff on the front end, we don't address that as well? That we're really not addressing the root, I mean, we're addressing some components, but not the ones that we're complaining about getting the water on the north side. So I think we're, I think we're on the same page. Councilmember Iverson?
Yeah, I'm glad you said that, if, that you stated that there's already issues with existing home and now we're adding almost the same square footage from a rooftop and we're looking at just gutter. But we had an issue with the front of the house that didn't have gutter. So I would like, Mike, to see you just relook at that and what was creating the existing problems that are there today? And how do we better, how do we fix that? Because apparently there is an issue today.
Yeah, I'll have to clarify with Ms. Quarles. I believe the stormwater concern was with the property that is located to the northeast of this project, not directly to the south. So the runoff from the front of the house isn't having any adverse impact on anyone that I'm aware of or that staff is aware of right now.
So it's just that northeast corner?
Correct, and I believe that everything that drains to the back or to the south of the property as proposed is directed to the new infiltration basin where it will be managed.
Okay. Are there?
I don't disagree that there are some, you could always do more.
Right.
So we can have the conversation with the applicant about, are there some things that they can do to improve the drainage from the front? I think this accommodates the concerns of the drainage, the natural drainage pattern of this to the south and the east.
Okay. Any remedies if, if this does not address the water runoff issue? For some reason, we're still having issues or recreate more issues, what's?
I don't disagree with the city attorney's suggestion of having the condition relate to approval by the city engineer for the plans as they come through with the building permit. We're happy to do that. I think perception is a very challenging thing to enforce. We're seeing that they're proposing to make improvements. I think there will be improvements. The question is going to always be the perception of the adjacent property owners as to whether something has been improved or continues to be an issue.
Okay.
One more thing, Mayor.
Yes.
1202? I think he's housebound. So we might want to somehow do some due diligence, either walk or look at his property. He may not be able to respond because I think he's housebound for health reasons.
I will note, Councilmember, that he would have received two mailings, both one from us and one from the applicant with options to mail, call, email.
Maybe just a walk on his property to see. I kind of forgot about that.
Yeah, only with his permission.
Well, yeah, no, I'm not walking on it. I already get in trouble, that'd be three dings today.
But let's get back to, I would like to share my thoughts on the, on this application. I think that, you know, there definitely are some practical difficulties with this lot. It is a small, non-conforming lot. However, what I do, I do appreciate and recognize are the steps that are being taken to mitigate the stormwater runoff. And it should be noted, I mean, I think we're reducing the, we're reducing the parking setback. We're reducing the, wow, I can't even read my handwriting.
Impervious surface?
Impervious surface, thank you, yes. Which we don't, we rarely see. I mean, we still have to approve it, but, so I do appreciate that. I would be in favor of, you know, tweaking that condition. And, you know, just respectfully asking that, you know, staff and the applicant work closely. Everybody wants to be a good neighbor and I feel, you know, this is the best, the best avenue in terms of the improvement of the property. And it seems very, very reasonable what they're asking, given the challenges of that site. So do we, do we need to state any changes to the condition in the motion? Or are we, we've already directed staff and that's sufficient?
Madam Mayor, I guess it depends on how comfortable you are with Director Kelly making sure those plans work that they've submitted. If you want to give him further authority to review and require modifications to those plans, I would just add to condition two of the resolution that the plans for stormwater management and mitigation subject to the city engineer's approval or review and approval.
I would be comfortable with that. Councilmember Iverson, how do you feel about that recommendation?
I would support that.
Okay. Everybody, would you support that? Okay, so it looks like everybody would support that. So we need to make a motion then to consider, to adopt resolution 58-2023 approving the impervious surface and side yard setback variances at 308 Hampton Street South with the amended condition as stated by the city attorney.
That'll work, Madam Mayor.
Perfect. Someone like to make that motion? So moved. In a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, that motion passes. Very good. Next up this evening is to consider approval of a grading plan for 340 PV Road. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Kelly is going to walk us through this one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Before you tonight, we have an interesting presentation regarding grading plan approval. It's not something that you would normally see. We have an interesting code provision, which we'll talk about in a minute. But that's why you, as the council, are seeing and being asked to approve of a grading plan. The property is located at 340 PV Road, which is within the Highcroft neighborhood. This is a zoom in on the existing property. The property is about 1.7 acres in size. The applicant's request, they're proposing to construct a new home on the site and are asking to regrade the rear yard to a more gradual four to one slope. There is a pretty steep slope, and I'll show you a survey here in a second, to create a more usable rear yard. The issue at hand tonight is code provision, Chapter 91604D, which states modifications which serve to alter the average and typical natural grade of an individual lot more than two feet shall require the approval of the city council. This is not a variance request. We've had conversations with the city attorney that in most cases, code might state that thou shalt not grade a lot more than two feet. And that would set the limit or the restriction whereby someone would then either meet or choose to request a variance for. In this case, this particular provision is somewhat vague in that it says if somebody wants to grade more than two feet, they need your approval. So that's why we're here tonight. This is an existing site plan of the site. I know it's a little bit hard to see, there's a lot of lines. Really what I want to point out here are the red arrows that are on the site that show the, kind of the drainage pattern of how this site or this rear yard flows, generally flows to the east and to the north. This is the proposed site plan. Gets even a little bit harder to see, but those same darker lines, and I'm going to back up, I'm going to kind of go in between them. The darker lines don't change, but there's the addition of some kind of greenish and bluish contour lines as to where they want to do their work. I will point out that the drainage arrows don't really change. The proposed amounts of grading on this site, I've noted on the left. The proposed cut, or how much they're going to be digging, is about 3,500 cubic yards. That's primarily for the construction of the home and the pool and patio. The proposed fill on the site is about 5,400 cubic yards, of which they'll use most of the 3,500 yards that they dug out for the home, which creates a net of about 1,800 cubic yards. When we figure out this two-foot average over a site, we add those two cut and fill numbers together. And the reason that I say that is because someone may want to cut an area of their property, thereby changing the natural grade. And in another area of the site, fill, also changing the natural grade of the site. So we add those together, average them out to determine this two feet. In this particular area with the cut and the fill, the average grade change on this lot is proposed to be 3.22 feet. I highlighted in blue where this, where primarily the grading, the fill, is proposed to change the grade of the backyard. And as I mentioned before, it's primarily to flatten out the slope from the rear of the house to some distance in the backyard to make it a little bit more functional. We've looked at this in our department. The proposed hardcover on the site is 12.34. This is way less than what's typically allowed in this district of 20%, so we're not concerned about hardcover or runoff from the, any hardcover. The drainage patterns aren't really affected on the site. They'll continue to drain to the east and to the north. And I know that our applicant has been communicating with our city forester on the appropriate tree removal and mitigation plan, which will be finalized as they move forward to a potential building permit application. So with that, this weird presentation on a, not a variance, we're asking that you consider approval of the grading plan for 340 PV Road. And I'm happy to stand for any questions, and I know that we have a representative from Wooddale Builders here as well.
Excellent, thank you, Director Kelly. Questions of staff? Kathy?
Oh, my poor eyes. I see how many, again, it's a little off-topic just a town, but just so I have the information, I see how many caliber inches are going to be replaced, how many trees are actually being removed, or how many inches if we do it that way.
Yeah, I don't have that right in front of me. I did put it in the packet, so I can pull that up here real quick.
Inches is 139.5.
Okay, thank you.
Total of 637.
That's to be replaced.
And how many are being removed? Okay, so 300 are removed. Okay, thank you, Molly. Okay.
Thank you, Molly.
Okay. Uh, yes.
Madam Mayor, if I could just interject, to just add on to Director Kelly's presentation as you think about this, you know, as he's noted, this isn't a variance request. We don't have any particular criteria with which to base your decision on in the city code. So this is one of those cases where your decision just has to be a reasonable one based in fact and law. You've got a lot of discretion here whether to grant this or not. If this seems like a reasonable request based on what Director Kelly has outlined, staff feels, I would just say you would preface your motion to approve this based on staff's presentation.
Perfect.
So just in case you're wondering about how you look at this, how you evaluate it, it's really based on the factors that Director Kelly outlined in terms of impacts.
Sure. This is an out-of-the-ordinary type of item for us to consider. I do have one question with the documents, and I'm looking specifically of, at page 129 of 129. And in the bottom left, this is a document that was prepared, the tree removal or the tree mitigation plan by Heather Burkquist, prepared for the applicant's building representative. And it says in the bottom left-hand side, "Proposed replacement tree type and final location to be determined by homeowner and landscape contractor." City attorney, by the very nature of just approving this item and thereby these documents that are part of the record, we're not agreeing to that statement, correct?
No, Madam Mayor, not at all. This is a very narrow question, as it's been posed to you, is whether you approve the grading plan. So I don't think the grading plan includes the tree plan. It's basically getting approval to remove more than...
Correct, and I'm going to, I'll stop you. There is some number of trees that are proposed to be removed and replaced as part of this project. What we're looking for approval tonight is simply the grading plan. The reason that I brought up some of the other topics, like I did, the hardcover, the drainage patterns and the trees are that, those are items that I want you to feel comfortable with as we move forward, but we're not necessarily approving them at this time. This project, as far as I know, is not requesting any variances for the construction of their home. This is really our opportunity for you to look at the grading plan, and we'll be looking at, as staff, the tree preservation and mitigation plan to ensure that it meets our tree preservation ordinance. So we're not asking you to finalize a landscape plan. We're not aware of a final landscape plan. We just want, and the representative wants to make sure that we have that flexibility as we move forward with the ultimate design of the project, that these aren't the final locations.
Okay, very good. Well, Jeff, yes, please go ahead.
So my question, Director Kelly, is if we approve this grading, it looks like there's no way to save, you can't save the trees that are in that grading, correct?
That's correct.
So that's going to be, I mean, it's, it's hard to make the decision in a vacuum because there were some beautiful trees back there that I thought most homeowners would want to save in this whole area, quite a lot of them, like maybe 20 of nice-sized trees. And it's kind of hard to make the decision when you're making the decision to tear them all down.
Yeah, and I guess I would respond by saying, we are requiring that they follow our tree preservation ordinance. If they would like to remove trees, there is a policy to replace them. They are working towards that policy or working towards meeting that requirement. So whether you approve the grading or not, we'll simply change the math. There will be fewer trees to remove, thereby fewer trees to replace. So by allowing the grading plan, there may be more trees to, that are being removed, but they will be replaced as required by our ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, you know, I'll just go ahead and start this off. As you mentioned, this is not a typical item that we have on our agenda. Definitely not an expert in terms of grading and water flow and direction. I do, I do appreciate the concern for the number of trees. There are a large number of trees for a very large lot. I don't understand the purpose of all that grading beyond, you know, where the house is, because I'm assuming all of that blue is part of the grading?
The blue is representing the proposed grading.
Yeah. So, but I'm also not terribly familiar with that site. So all things being equal, I do appreciate, if we go to the other slide, the hardcover and all of the other aspects. I mean, if we didn't have this in our code, we wouldn't know about this. We wouldn't, we'd have staff addressing the trees according to the ordinance that we passed. They'd be addressing all the building plans and everything else. So to me, this is, I mean, short of chopping a hill off, right, changing the entire topography of our city and creating a safety issue with the neighbors or in the back or the house itself, quite frankly. Because we have had some of those issues. We've had issues around town where we've said, no, that grade is not going to accommodate that house, it's not safe, it's... So to that end, I'm supportive of approving the grading plan as presented with all of the other caveats, you know, that staff will oversee and help guide and direct any other efforts with regard to construction, the plans and construction.
And if I could just interject something, Madam Mayor and council. The grading that you see is what is the applicant's design decision. Were they not to do this grading, they would require some pretty significant retaining walls in the back. And it changes the functionality of the property. The grade directly behind the patio change is about 10 feet, and what they're looking to do is smooth that out to be able to directly access their backyard from the pool and patio area. So I just want you to understand that it's a request that they're making to do. There are other alternatives. In this particular case, the client is requesting this request or application to do the grading to make better use of their property.
Does it end up improving? I mean, we just had an application with regard to surface runoff. Does this help catch and or kind of lessen the slope to be able to allow that water to permeate naturally into the soils better?
I would say somewhat yes. They're flattening the grade out, which will slow the runoff from the home site to the back of the property.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else want to share their thoughts? Molly?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. That last little bit of nuance from Director Kelly was really helpful. That was my understanding, that they essentially wanted to sort of level out that backyard and make it a little bit more usable. And that all seemed pretty reasonable to me, and I look forward to the applicant working with our city forester on a really exceptional tree replacement plan. But I do support this ask.
Great, thank you, Molly. Kathy?
Thank you. I wish I better understood grading plans. I really, I honestly do, and you guys know that I've been struggling with one on Lake Street over the last couple of weeks. And I don't know if for grading for dummies, if we could have cross-sections, if that would help us to visually see it better. My ask, it sounds like it's different than what happened at Lake Street, is that there isn't such a significant change to the property that, to me, it feels like it alters it significantly. It sounds to me that this is improving it. I wish I had this magic sight where I could see into the future so I could visually see what this is. I'm, as you guys can tell, I'm just really struggling because of what happened on Lake Street.
I guess I don't know what happened on Lake Street.
Yeah. If I could just interject something really quickly. This one is a bit different than
It always...
the Lake Street property. The 1030 Lake Street subdivision was approved, the split of two different lots. There was, there was grading that was depicted on the site plan. It came in slightly different as part of the building permit plan. I want you to, all to be reassured that by approving this grading plan, this is what you will see on this site. There can't be any other changes. This is the plan that you approved. If they want to make changes to this grading plan, they will have to come back to you again. This one, again, very weird idiosyncrasy of our code.
Sure.
But in this particular case, you are approving this exact grading plan.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, I, I was out there today, beautiful trees. I think the way the land is laid out, that there are probably multiple other landscaping options than just bulldozing everything and trying to make it as, as less steep as possible. But I think that the homeowner has their best interests at heart, and I'm not going to say no to this for that reason, but I do think there's plenty of other alternatives, and I thought the grade that existed there now could be quite attractive, so. So with some trepidation, I will vote to approve this.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, we have, we don't have a motion. No, we don't. I guess the, would someone like to make a motion to approve the grading plan for 340 PV Road?
And I guess I would just add to city attorney's point, based on the presentation provided by staff.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd add that to the motion. And the other thing, I think to just put a finer point on the motion to Director Kelly's earlier point, you're approving this particular plan. Any alterations would require that it come back to you unless it's, doesn't need the city council approval anymore because they're not making the change, so.
So it doesn't have to be another 2% change? It could be any change to the grade? I mean, I don't want to see
Unless they don't need city council approval anymore.
I don't want to see a new grading plan for a six-inch difference.
I would say that if there were any grading plan to exceed the amount that you're approving tonight, I would bring it back to you. If they, as part of their overall site development, were able to minimize or reduce the amount of grading proposed on the site, I think we would handle that administratively.
Okay.
That's interesting, Madam Mayor. Then I would, I would make that part of the motion, that you would approve the grading plan for 340 PV Road based on the staff presentation and with a condition that any changes that would be less wouldn't need to come back, but any that would create more would.
If I could clarify, I hate to jump on the city attorney
Confusing motions.
I think I have a better way to say it, that you guys would be approving the grading plan not to exceed 3.22 feet of grade change on the site.
I like that.
Fair enough.
That's great. And city attorney, you are comfortable with that?
I am.
All right, next up, law school for Director Kelly. All right. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll move to approve the grading plan for 340 PV Road, not to exceed the 3.22 feet.
And Percent?
Percent?
Feet.
Oh, feet.
Correct.
Feet, pardon me.
And also, we got there by staff's presentation, so.
Okay. No.
I'll wait. I just want to be clear and side with the city attorney here. We're, if we approved this with just that exception, they could come back with a different plan that has an impact on drainage and has other things that we discussed in this plan that would be, that would be approved administratively, so.
This plan?
That it's, the, that's a little bit more open, the one that the council is currently considering.
But if it doesn't have to do with grading, then we would expect you to handle it administratively. We're only talking about grading changes. So if the drainage changed, I mean, I guess I'm not understanding what...
We're, we're leaving them to do, well, I don't know what kind of administrative, like, leverage we have, but it's a lot more flexible where they wouldn't necessarily have to come back to completely, you know, regrade the property, but as long as they're within that 3.22 feet. It just makes me a little nervous, but maybe if you guys are both cool with it, then I'm, I can, but it's, it's a little bit more broad.
I just want to clarify, we're approving this grading plan not to exceed 3.22 feet.
Hundred percent.
This grading plan.
Yeah.
So the intent is for this grading plan to be implemented.
Anything outside of the grading plan would be handled the way we handle any other building permit and application, correct? I'm seeing brows furrow.
Madam Mayor, what, what I'm, I guess the question I would have for Director Kelly with his proposed language is, when you say this plan, a plan that's less isn't the same plan anymore. It's a different plan, right?
I, I fully expect that the builder will build this grading plan if approved this evening.
Yeah, I think that's the approval that we should, should give. I mean, that's what the code requires. You know, and I think there's some, we're not going to get super precise. I mean, if it complies with it in all material respects, I think that's fine, but I would say if it's significantly reduced, I mean, it's, and, but it's still more than two feet, you'd need to come back. Like if it was, you know, yeah, so.
Great, so are we offering a friendly amendment to the motion that's on the table? I think so.
I would recommend that, Madam Mayor, that...
Would you like to propose how we might state that?
Well, I think that we might just get back to the way this motion Well, I think that we might just get back to the way this motion was teed up for you originally, which is to approve the grading plan for 340 PV Road as presented based upon staff's presentation.
Okay.
That's the exact motion.
Perfect. So...
See, Mike was right all along, he just didn't...
Yes. It's okay, we're walking through this. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Oops. All right, that is it for new business. We are on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of quick things here. Just as a reminder for you, and then just a note to the community, we're going to be having a special meeting on November 2nd. That is just to consider some value engineering options for the docks as a part of the Panaway project, so that'll be up on our website soon, but that'll be a special meeting at 5:00 PM on Thursday, November 2nd. Also, before too long here, we're going to be hosting all the wonderful volunteers in our town at our volunteer dinner, November 13th. We've sent a lot of invites, more than 100, to all of the participants in some of our volunteer events, as well as our members of the boards and commissions. So we look forward to seeing many community members and just really appreciating them and thanking them for all the service they've done over the year. Lastly, the big event this weekend is our, is the Chambers Boobash. That's on Saturday, October 28th. It's really kind of grown over the past few years. It started, I believe, in Colonial Square with a bunch of activities that Lund's and some of the businesses up there sponsor. It's also grown on Lake Street with the Chamber operating a bunch of races, so there's a 10K, 5K competitive mile run, as well as a family fun run. Of course, there's a costume contest, a pumpkin derby. What else am I forgetting? Pie eating contest, if anybody, if anyone's interested in that.
Pumpkin, I'm sure.
I would hope so, yeah. Benedict's is going to be out there slinging some Eggs Benedict and other breakfast goods. So please, invitation to the council community to come on down. That's in the morning, the 28th. The event's at Colonial Square, start at 11:00 and then it'll go till 2:00. There'll be a bunch of activities. All the businesses open up and give out candy, so families can bring the kids and trick or treat at all the different locations. So really fun event. Hopefully, we get mild weather and it's not too cold. And, yeah, that's all I have.
Wonderful.
City Manager, can I ask you a quick question about that event? And maybe Director Kelly can respond. Is, are any of the roads going to be closed on Saturday?
Good question. I'll look to Director Kelly.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. As, as part of the Boobash Dash races that are occurring, we typically close the westbound lane of Lake Street between the Promenade and Ferndale Road. We will be opening Ferndale Road this weekend to allow for traffic to run north-south at the west end of town, which allows the races to happen between Ferndale and Berry. So we'll remove the detour this weekend. You'll likely see that go back up for some final touch-up work on Ferndale next week, but everything should operate as it has in the past with only a westbound closure during the races.
Thanks.
Since you brought it up, how are the sidewalks coming along on Ferndale?
They're coming along really well. We have one small utility that is taking forever to move, so we have one phone box that needs to move back before we can pour that final panel sidewalk, but I would say about 95% of the sidewalk has been poured. The first layer of pavement's been placed, all the curb and storm sewer is completed. They finished some retaining wall work and lawn restoration in the last few days, which is great. Now we have some water to help water it. They're hoping to wrap up in the next week or so, slightly after this weekend.
Wonderful. We couldn't have asked for better weather along the way, so we really lucked out. That's fantastic.
Yeah.
Good. All right, seeing that there's nothing else, I wish all the little trick-or-treaters a fun time this weekend, and the runners. It's very, very exciting, always a smashing success. So thank you to the Chamber for putting that together as always. And then really looking forward to the volunteer dinner as well. So that's always a wonderful event, being able to thank and celebrate with the people who give so much of their time to the community, so.
What are you dressing up as mayor?
As a mayor. It's the best costume I got. But no, I will leave all the goodies for, for the littles to enjoy. But thank you all very much for your time this evening. Really appreciate it. We had some really great discussions, both at the workshop and the meeting. And with that, would anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
First and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. We are adjourned.